Call to order the July 31st meeting of the Cary Town Council and at this time I'll recognize Councilmember Yerha for our ceremonial opening. Mr. Yerha.
Thank you Mayor. In a few minutes, we're going to be swearing in a new town clerk. It's only the fourth time in almost 75 years that we've had a new town clerk in town. So in my opinion, it qualifies as a truly historic occasion.
I'm getting the groans already.
Yeah, you're going to get a few nuggets if you don't mind. Cary's history of things that involve town clerks. Back in 1921, Cary celebrated its 50th anniversary as a town. And it was thought at that time that it might be a good idea to start organizing the records of the first 50 years. And of course, that job fell primarily on the shoulders of the town clerk, whose job it is today to organize and keep our records. Well, in order to organize the records, you had to find them first. And that proved to be a daunting task. Sixty years later, and three clerks later, most of the records were found in an old house, gnawed by rodents, illegible, and good only to be destroyed. Very few were able to be salvaged, and we've really lost almost all of our records from the first 50 years of Cary as a town. Next town clerk incident was 1937. Town clerk made news because after about 10 years as town clerk, without warning, he up and quit and left town. That wasn't the big news story of the day. The police chief also left at the same time. And if that wasn't enough, the mayor resigned and left for parts unknown. Turned out, he went to Asheville. The reasons for that all happening at the same time is a story for another day. Suffice it to say, it wasn't one of Cary's finer moments.
I'll go ahead and tell the story.
But things got a little bit better a couple of years later in 1939. One of Cary's finest citizens became town clerk, Mr. L. E. Midgett Senior, Linville Senior. He became town clerk in 1939. He also became at the same time, fire chief, police chief, tax collector, building inspector, and superintendent of public works. In fact, for a few years in the early 40s, he was the only full-time town employee. And he served with distinction for 15 years. A lot of people, real old timers, still remember him today and his family. His son was a great athlete at Cary High School, Linville Junior. He was succeeded by Annie Jones. And Annie Jones today is a familiar name to many of us. She's the namesake of the park that's off of Cary Parkway on Tarbert Drive. Ms. Annie served for 27 years as town clerk and was so respected that a couple times during those 27 years, we were looking for a new town manager, and she was considered for the job. She never quite made it. She stayed as clerk, but it was okay with her because as everybody knew, she really ran the town anyway. And Ms. Annie then was succeeded by Marilyn Ryan, whom many of us know and fondly remember and respect. She served for 11 years. And then Marilyn, after her, came in 1992, the legendary Sue Roland, who I hope at a future meeting, we're going to get a chance to go over her accomplishments. But we've had a tremendous tradition of town clerks, at least for the last 75 years. And what does all this mean for you, Sherry? I guess it means, one, we promise you're not going to find a mess of rat-eating records. Sue did a better job than that, keeping these things. We also promise you're not going to wear all those hats that Linville Senior had to wear. We have other people to do those jobs nowadays. We trust you won't up and quit without warning. We also hope the mayor doesn't do that, come to think of it. And we do trust you'll carry on the great tradition of town clerks of the last 75 years and serve with professionalism, dedication to the town that we love and to its citizens. And I have the feeling you sure will. So let's all show our dedication to the land that we all love by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Yerha. We need to have you do all of our ceremonial openings. We're now at Agenda Item 1.3, which is the adoption of our agenda. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed motion carries unanimously. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations. And it's my pleasure and honor to swear in our new town clerk, Sherry Scoggins. And I would invite her and her family to the podium. I don't want to get in the way of our photographer over there. We're good?
Good.
All right. Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I-
Aye, Sherry L. Scoggins.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will support and maintain-
That I will support and maintain-
The Constitution and laws of the United States-
The Constitution and laws of the United States-
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina-
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina-
Not inconsistent therewith-
Not inconsistent therewith-
And that I will faithfully discharge-
That I will faithfully discharge-
The duties of my office as Cary Town Clerk-
The duties of my office as Cary Town Clerk-
So help me God-
So help me God.
Congratulations. We're all dying to hear what you got to say.
I can just say that these first four days on the job have just been wonderful. I am hoping, I don't have a pop quiz at the end of the week to put names with the faces just yet, but I can say everyone has been so friendly and so supportive. And I greatly appreciate this opportunity. And I'm just looking forward to serving Cary. Thank you.
And we're glad to have you. Thank you. All right. We're now moving to Item 2.2. And at this time, I'll invite Dwayne Jones and REI representatives to the podium for the grant presentation.
Good evening, Council. And I'd like to invite Councilmember Smith to the podium for this presentation. And while he's coming down, just like to let you know that we're here tonight to acknowledge a $10,000 grant from REI to the Town of Cary and the Friends of Hemlock Bluffs that will be used for trail improvements at the Preserve. Representing REI are Paul Harwood, the North Carolina Outdoor Programs and Outreach Market Coordinator, and Nick Cross, the Central North Carolina Outdoor Programs and Outreach Marketing Manager. Also with us tonight, representing the Friends of Hemlock Bluffs, are the incoming President, Jim Mason, and our current sitting President, Christina Hester, as well as the Nature Center Supervisor, Laura White. Council may remember, a couple of years ago, when we completed our master plan, we actually had a needs assessment that went along with that plan as part of the process. The assessment told us that Nature Center and Environmental Instruction were one of the highest priorities for our community in considering future indoor and outdoor facilities to expand and improve our community. This grant will allow the town to begin addressing this need. The partnership between REI, the Friends, and the town dates back to 1993. Since that time, REI has provided over $50,000 in assistance in trail improvements at Hemlock Bluffs. This grant funds will kickstart the creation of a Children's Nature Trail at the Preserve. The new trail will help children foster their love for nature during their visit to Hemlock Bluffs. At this time, I would like to turn the podium over to Mr. Harwood and Mr. Cross for the presentation.
Thanks, Dwayne. Well, thanks for letting us speak real briefly tonight. For those of you that don't know about REI, perhaps, we are the nation's largest consumer co-op. And in fact, anything you do with the outdoors that makes you sweat, we love. And we're all about. In fact, our mission statement is to inspire, educate, and to outfit for a lifetime of outdoor adventure and stewardship. And we can't do that without good community partners. And I cannot think of a better example of a great community partner than Hemlock Bluffs. Lori and her team have just done a tremendous job over the years of doing great work out there. And to a finer point that Nick and I both are really keen on, they've also really raised the bar on educating that next generation of stewards. Their program for the kids, the elementary, the middle school kids out there is just the best I've ever seen. So it is with great pleasure that we give this grant to Hemlock Bluffs, and we hope there's many more in the future as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just got my dividend check from REI. That's a great-
That's a great organization.
Ed, you were into history tonight. And as a piece of trivia, back in the 80s in my very first campaign and my very first debate, and my very first question was, what's this expenditure about Hemlock Bluffs? And would you support that expenditure? I'm really glad I answered that right. So that was a great investment back then, and it has just been a real, real accomplishment for the town and the kids. It's a place that my grandkids hang out. And we, as a town, are so proud to have you, REI, as a partner for well over 20 years. And over the years, REI grants have made a tremendous impact on Hemlock Bluffs by improving the trails and boardwalks in addition to providing new interpretive and directional signage within the Preserve. The Town of Cary is enriched by the organizations like REI and the Friends of Hemlock Bluffs, who truly embrace their community, believe in the importance of philanthropy, and understand their sense of place. We thank you for helping make Hemlock Bluffs the treasure it is. And I want to thank you once again.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'd like to-
I'd like to echo Mr. Smith's comments. What a gracious and generous gift, and it
really means a lot to us. And thank you so much from the bottom of our hearts. And I can tell you, the Friends of Page Walker, Friends of Hemlock Bluffs are special, and you keep that place magical. And if you ever, if you haven't been to Hemlock Bluffs and you want to get back to nature in a hurry, that's the place to go. So thank you for all you do and for, again, for a generous gift. Thank you all. We now move to Item 2.3. Councilmember Yerha will now recognize the Cary Invasion.
Could I ask the Cary Invasion delegation to come up and join me at the podium, please? You know, Cary has been very proud of its commitment to sports and it's very proud of its sports venues for a long time. And until recently, one of Cary's best-kept sports secrets has been the Cary Invasion basketball team. But in recent months, I hope you've been reading about it in various magazines and newspapers. In fact, just yesterday, the Cary News had a nice feature story on the front page. Its new owner is longtime Cary resident and community volunteer, Doc Thorne. And I think it's no coincidence, maybe, that the publicity has been upped a little bit since Doc's taken over ownership. It's my honor tonight to read this proclamation honoring the team. And following the proclamation, Doc, I'd like you to say a few words and perhaps introduce the rest of the folks, if you don't mind. Thank you. Whereas, it always starts with whereas. You notice that? Whereas, the Town of Cary welcomes amateur and minor league sports and has identified sports development as a key strategy for economic development. Whereas, the Tobacco Road Basketball League is the preeminent semi-professional basketball league in the Carolinas. Whereas, the Cary Invasion is a charter member of the Tobacco Road League, now entering its fourth season of play, and they play their home games on Kayal Court at the Herbert Se Young Community Center in downtown Cary, affectionately referred to as Area 51 on game nights. Whereas, the Cary Invasion team's objectives include providing a fun, entertaining, family-oriented, and professional sports program, giving back to the community for the support they provide, and of course, winning the upcoming season's championship. Whereas, the Cary Invasion proudly display the Cary name on their jerseys, acting as unofficial ambassadors of the Town of Cary in persona and action to every Tobacco Road League venue from Winston-Salem to Wilmington and from Richmond, Virginia to Spartanburg, South Carolina. Whereas, for the past three seasons, including the most recent, the Cary Invasion has won the regular season of play and brought the Eastern Division Championship back to Cary. They continue to bring honor and pride to themselves and to the Town of Cary. Now therefore, I, Ed Yerha, on behalf of Harold Weinberg Jr., Mayor of the Town of Cary, and the entire Cary Town Council, do hereby congratulate the Cary Invasion, Cary's official semi-professional basketball team, on winning the Eastern Division Championship of the Tobacco Road Basketball League. And I urge all Cary citizens to support the Cary Invasion in their attempt to bring another championship to Cary next season. Proclaim this 31st day of July, 2014.
Thank you. Good evening. I really don't have a lot to add to that. This pretty much tells the whole story, the Cary Invasion. I would like to introduce to you, though, the members. Not all of our team is here. Our coach called me just about five minutes before I left, telling me his daughter had a gymnastics accident, so he's not here. So we have a few folks that aren't here, but I'd like to introduce you to who we do have.
This is Anton Curry.
Good evening.
This is Paul Wright. Paul Wright was our high scorer this year and also a member of the All-Stars in the league.
This is Raheem Michoy.
Good evening.
He's our center, in case you can't.
Even I knew that.
Mike Smith. Mike Smith was our other All-Star this year.
Good evening.
And second-high point scorer.
Good evening.
Rodney Callwood. He's a shooting guard.
Energy guy.
Yeah, yeah. He actually scored most of our points when we were in South Carolina a couple weeks ago. Brandon Hickson.
Good evening.
He's our, he's our fast forward. Brandon, you know, a lot of folks, we play, a lot of teams we play, have a lot taller players than ours. I mean, quite a few of them are as big as Raheem. Brandon's real good about running under the legs. And this is Arianna Goldstein. She is our Director of Dancers. We have a professional dance team also that works with the Invasion. The whole idea is to put on a mini NBA experience here in Cary. Again, I want to thank you for your support, the Council and the town. And I'd like to ask one, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot about this. I would like to present this to the Town of Cary. This is our trophy for display. I'm only giving it to you temporarily.
I'd have to give it back.
No. The reason I say that, though, is because we intend on winning another one here. Our season starts November 1st. We end in May. So we'll bring you even a bigger one next year for display. Other than that, the only other thing that I'd like to request, guys, we stand out here in unfurling, please. We'd like your permission to have these three banners become permanent installations in the Herb Young Center, please.
All right.
You got another one, Doc.
This is Charles Skywalker Ward. He's been with the team since day one. Actually, he helped organize it. Charles is another shooting guard.
Good evening.
Well, on behalf of the organization, again, I was going to say thank you. Thank you for your support. And I'd like to see each one of your faces out of the game on November 1st. It's going to be a big one. We're going to have the Helping Hand Mission Band as halftime entertainment. Hopefully, they committed to it. Cary Concert Singers will be doing our opening ceremonies. We've got food. We've got, we've got a full court. We've got a full support of fans. We'd like to have more. I think you come out and bring out your family. I think you'd have a good time.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you so much.
And congratulations.
Congratulations.
And we look forward to that bigger trophy next year. We now move to the Public Speaks Out portion of our meeting. This is Item 3 on your agenda. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda. If you'd like to speak at Public Speaks Out, please take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes for each of their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing topic. There's a three-minute time limit, and to be fair to all of our speakers, I will strictly enforce the three-minute time limit. There's a timer on the podium. When the green light turns yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. And when time expires, the yellow light turns to a flashing red light, and I will interrupt you and ask you to immediately conclude your comments. I thank all of our speakers in advance for adhering to our three-minute time limit. We also ask that groups allow a spokesperson to speak on behalf of the group so we can reduce repetitive comments. And I thank everyone in our audience for respecting that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that might distract from this meeting. So now it's time for Public Speaks Out, and for anyone who would like to speak on a topic that's not a public hearing. And at this time, I would invite our first speaker to the podium from the aisle to my right. And please give the clerk your card.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. My name is Margaret Campbell, and I live at 2816 Campbell Road. I am speaking tonight on the Pritchett Farm property. Our community would like to thank you very much for working with us during the past year. While the latest proposal from M.I. Holmes is not where the community would like it, there, at this point, we're getting there. The process has been painful to all involved, but through it all, we have gotten to know each other, and that in itself has been a positive experience for me. It has been refreshing to speak with each of you and know from your comments that you are listening. When we leave this meeting room tonight, there will be no winners or losers. We all have worked hard together, and as for myself, I know our community much better than a year ago. And I hope to continue the relationships that have been nurtured during the past year. Thank you again for being a part of our life.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers and friends, I'm Robert Gates. And my wife and I live at 6016 Fordland Avenue or Drive for the past 12 years. Councilmembers, you have a unique opportunity. You can decide to begin to create a beautiful development which will welcome, be a welcoming gateway and an asset to the Town of Cary, or you can create a community with houses row by row and with little or no space between the buildings. This is the decision you are to make. And this is why the neighborhood surrounding the Pritchett property have been so vocal in their opposition to the proposals made by M.I. Holmes. Granted, there are those individuals who would like to live close together and have, and they have an opportunity in other parts of Cary. However, there are also those people who have, would like to have room on their property for gardens, plate sets, landscaping, and a place to enjoy their privacy. In fact, when we moved to North Carolina, we were told there's no buildings or homes with one acre of land available. But we found a home on Fordland Drive, and that is the beauty of Campbell Road, Fordland Drive, and Holly Springs Road community where we live. Now, for the current M.I. Holmes proposal, M.I. Holmes proposal, even though we have made significant headway on transition and compatibility, the community supports 75% of M.I. Holmes' proposal. The community cannot, however, support 35 to 45 8,000 square foot lots on roughly 15 to 17 acres in the quadrant north of the cemetery along Campbell, Holly Springs Road on Track 1. The community thanks the Council and the Cary staff for considering the community's request for no connectivity of Fordland Drive to the Pritchett Farm development. And we feel that significant headway has been made and is being made, and we thank you for that. There is still a valid petition.
I'm sorry to have to interrupt you, but your time has expired. If you want to leave your comments with the clerk, he'll make-
I have left it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the Council. My name is Ken Raver. I live at 7001 Fordland Drive. And I've spoken to you several times on behalf of the residents. Well, tonight, I'm not doing that. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of myself. And I think what I'm actually presenting is the minority dissent of probably a- is the minority dissent, probably a dissent of two, but in any case, I felt it's necessary to give a second opinion of what, what some of our feelings are. First of all, I want to thank all of you. This has been a very long and difficult task. You have made yourself available to us through emails, comments, meetings, and we appreciate that. We appreciate your input, your advice, and in many times, your counsel as we go through this. We've had three issues from the beginning: connectivity, transition, and compatibility. For the issue of connectivity, we appreciate the words that have been put forward to not connect Fordland Drive. I would like to have seen them a little bit stronger, but I do recognize you have the legal obligations and legal parameters that you have to work with. So we accept on good faith, the council really has no intention of connecting Fordland Drive, and that is a major, major concern to us, and we truly, truly appreciate your position. On transitioning compatibility, as Mr. Gates said, it's not perfect. We would like to see different things, and I'll quote his numbers because I agree with them. Probably like about 75% of it. There's probably 25% of it that are very difficult to live with. But as I look at it, at a solution, maybe it's not a great solution, but it is an acceptable solution. As I look at the total package and we look at connecting Fordland Drive, the total development of that property, I believe at least this minority of two, we can support it. Again, it's not the best presentation, but it's one I think we can live with. Regardless of how it goes, whether it's approved tonight or disapproved tonight, we would hope the relationship in working with the council through this, in working with M.I. Holmes, and working with the residents can continue. It has been a very valuable process. I have truly appreciated the input and talking with people and emails back and forth and meeting our neighbors, and we hope it will certainly work out to the advantage of everybody in the future. So again, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Craig Gresham. I reside at 807 Kingswood Drive, which is just off of Harrison Avenue, about five houses in. And I'd like to speak as a resident in the immediate vicinity of Harrison Avenue regarding the consideration of a complete street conversion. I'm a self-employed civil engineer. I work and live at my home off Kingswood Drive. And first of all, I'd like to thank you for the sidewalks, the town for the sidewalks they put in my neighborhood. I've met more neighbors in the last year than the first six years I lived there, so it's made our neighborhood more cohesive. But my particular issues with Harrison Avenue are the safety. It's a four-lane undivided road, which I consider very dangerous. It's difficult to turn onto Harrison Avenue from a neighborhood, and it's also unsafe when you're turning from Harrison Avenue because of the potential for getting rear-ended. I have two children, five and seven years old, and will be, they will be attending Kingswood Elementary in about a month. To cross Harrison Avenue from Kingswood Drive, the sidewalk's on the west side of the road, so to use the sidewalk on Harrison Avenue, we have to cross Harrison Avenue. I've timed it myself. Coming southbound, there's a sight distance problem, there's a dip in the road, they come back up. Once you see a car, you have seven to 10 seconds to cross the road. It takes 10 seconds to cross the road at a normal pace, so pretty much you have to run across. I've done it with a stroller before. So I'm supporting changing the cross-section to something more appropriate for a residential area, which is what this is, similar to Walnut Street, where residents fought hard to keep a median with two through lanes. Or at least to have a median continuous left-turn lane so that there's some refuge and access. So I would strongly support a similar cross-section on Harrison Avenue where, A, there's refuge for pedestrians to be able to cross the road, you're not sprinting across four lanes of traffic, and B, it's more appropriate for the amount of driveways that we have on that particular section of road. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one, we'll close Public Speaks Out, and we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is item four on your agenda. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, I'm going to take a few moments and review our consent agenda items. One vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes, tax report, ratification of resolution, proposed sale of easements. And I would ask at this time, would any council members like an item pulled from the consent agenda for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to public hearings. We're at item 5.1, and our first public hearing is on the Kensington Place rezoning request. We're going to hear a report from our staff. The applicant will come forward to explain the request, we'll conduct a public hearing, and council will not act on this item this evening. Instead, we're going to refer to our Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation and review. Ms. Spearman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a public hearing on a request to rezone about 16 acres located at 6,200, 6,308, and 6,312 Holly Springs Road. The property is on the west side of Holly Springs Road. It is between the Colonial Baptist Church to the north and the South Hills Baptist Church to the south. This is a closer aerial view. The subject property consists of three separate parcels. The northernmost parcel, only the, the front portion of that parcel that contains an existing residence, which is about an acre in size, is not being rezoned at this time, that would retain the current zoning. The existing zoning is residential 40. This is also the existing zoning that's pulled out a little bit to show the boundary of the adjacent Swift Creek Mixed Juice Overlay District. The proposed zoning is transitional residential conditional use. There are several proposed zoning conditions. Those conditions include limiting the land, land use to townhomes. The northwest corner of the site, which is west of the stream buffer, would be located in common open space with a minimum of 4,800 square feet of gathering space, and also a pedestrian connection to connect this open space area to the remainder of the developed portion of the site. And also, the applicant proposed additional landscape material along a portion of the western property line. This is an exhibit that illustrates these zoning conditions. You can see here additional area of, or committed area for open space, a pedestrian connection, and in this open space area, the applicant has committed to 4,800 square feet of gathering space. And then you can see, illustrated with these circles, where there would be additional landscape material planted to ensure an opaque screen to the rear of the adjacent subdivision lots along Long Bridge Drive in the adjacent subdivision. This shows the southeast area plan. The property, the land use plan designation is low-density to medium-density residential. It is subject to Note 13 on the plan. Note 13 indicates that the development at a medium-density residential density should only occur if at least two to three of the adjacent, of adjacent lots are combined, which would be the case with this rezoning. It's also subject to a note regarding access points, that there would be access points consolidated to minimize the impact on the adjacent road. According to Cary's GIS maps, the site is impacted by stream buffers. This, the field determination of the exact location would be made at the time of the site or subdivision plan review. The site is not impacted by any greenways or multi-use trails according to the Parks and Greenways Plan. It is adjacent to Holly Springs Road, which is designated as a major thoroughfare, and there are no existing or proposed transit routes along Holly Springs Road in this area. This map shows properties that were notified of the public hearing. We did receive a couple of calls, just inquiries related to the request. No protest petition was filed. And that concludes staff's comments. Will be available for questions following the public hearing.
Very good. At this time, I would invite the applicant, the applicant's representative forward.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. I'm Mike Kemp with Kensington Partners, and we would like to commend the staff for a report that accurately describes our intent for the development. So we feel that, that our proposed development is, is in the spirit and intent of the growth management plan set out by the town. We've studied it very carefully and have tried to take the town's feelings and plan into consideration and feel like we've matched it pretty well. We have maintained a natural feature of a full stream buffer and additional open space to the west as a transition to the adjacent neighborhood of Coventry Glen. We have institutional uses on the north and the south of the property, and we have Holly Springs Road to the east, which we planned to widen. We're approximately a quarter mile to an activity center, well within walking distance, which is a huge benefit to us and, and to the town and the residents, future residents. The development team has worked very closely with the neighbors, all, all the neighbors, adjacent property owners and surrounding neighbors in the area, and are happy to say that there are no protest positions. We look forward to, to continuing a dialogue with everyone involved. Do you have any questions for me at this?
We may later, but none now.
All right. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Spearman, if you've completed your report, I'll go ahead and start the public hearing. Okay? This time, I'll open the public hearing.
I can wait later.
Okay. Open the public hearing and invite the first speaker forward. Do you want to speak at this public hearing?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Doug Jacobs. I represent the Wood family, who's current owners of 6,312 Holly Springs Road. Just would like to say that, that in, in working with Kensington Partners, I, I think they have done a great job of, of being cognizant of the southeast area plan and, and the details that are provided there, of, of being aware of the concerns and the desires of, of the neighbors, having held multiple organized meetings as well as meeting with neighbors on an individual basis to take their thoughts and, and concerns into consideration as much as possible. And I think ultimately what they've done is put together a plan that, that can be, that we all can be proud of. I think that, that certainly the family has, has found that they've got a, a good partner in, in these guys. And, and it's, it, it appears that they're going to put together something that, that ultimately can be held up as a model of, not just something that, that meets, but that exceeds expectations that, that I think you guys have when, when it comes to development, that, that, that makes sense in an area like this. And so the family, on behalf of the family, I would just say, we, we think we've got a good partner in, in Kensington, and, and we appreciate you guys' favorable and fair consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? I see no one. I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions and then comments. Mr. Smith.
Yeah, Ms. Spearman, I just, I recall when this was first being made aware to, to the community, there were a lot of calls and there were a lot of questions. And, you know, the conundrum we have is, we don't even know what's going on yet because it's just the neighborhood meetings. And has there been any follow-up? I'm, I'm actually just surprised at not to have heard from anyone since those meetings. So, you know, is that something I should ask the applicant on the nature of those meetings and how they went? Because there was quite a list of concerns. And just, you know, historically, when they come before us, those, those tend to be vocalized, and the silence tonight is deafening.
You could certainly ask the applicant questions regarding those meetings. I can tell you what I had heard. Early on, I did hear some comments, questions from a few of the neighbors along Long Bridge Drive, expressing some concerns with buffering, landscaping, potential impacts of sewer easements. So the, the concerns that staff had heard were related to some of the buffering and landscaping issues that may have been addressed through some of the zoning conditions that were put forward. Any other comments related to that the applicant would need to speak to?
Would you like to get the applicant down for comments?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you for your question, Jack. We, we have, originally, we, there was concern, and obviously, with any new development proposed, there will be a lot of questions and a lot of concerns. We have had an initial neighborhood meeting, then a second neighborhood meeting, then since then, we've had several group meetings and several individual or small group meetings. And I believe that the silence is, is a good thing, that it, it shows and demonstrates that we have listened to everybody as a group and also everybody individually, and dealt with their concerns, and, and hopefully, they all feel comfortable with what we're proposing and, and what we're trying to accomplish here. And, and I think that the fact that there was no protest positions and that there's, as we're hearing silence, I, I take that as a very good, very good for the project. So I think, in general, we've spent a lot of time with the, with the neighbors, including the Coventry Glen Homeowners Association.
Which homeowners?
The Coventry Glen, that's the adjacent.
Okay, yeah, sure.
With the, the association president and, and the, the HOA board, and certainly all of the adjacent property owners to, to, to the property, to the subject property, but in addition to that, people that aren't, are not adjacent. So we, we really have spent a lot of time on that.
Thank you for that feedback.
Okay. Thank you, Jack.
Anything else, Mr. Smith? Other questions, comments? I know that right off the bat, I'm concerned about the density low to medium, and it's toward high and medium, so gonna have a lot of convincing to do to get me to like this one.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I appreciate the response from the applicant. That's the intent of those pre-meetings, that they, you know, they meet with folks. So the burden goes both ways, you know. I had heard from a lot of folks, particularly on that street, and then all of a sudden, that, that feedback went away. So, you know, I'm just stating the, the events at that time and what the concerns were, so.
Okay. Anything else? All right. This will go to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and their recommendation. Thank you, Ms. Spearman. We now move to discussion items. Our first discussion item is 6.1, the consideration of street conversion pilot project for North Harrison Avenue. Mr. Delk will present this item, and then council may take action or may not. Mr. Delk.
Good evening, council. We're presenting on tonight a consideration of a North Harrison Complete Street Conversion Pilot Project that's going to be done with our Community Investment Bonds Bicycle Improvements, a project that was approved back in 2012. The segment of Harrison Avenue we're looking at is from West Chapel Hill Road up to Maynard If you remember, back in January, we came forward with a list of projects for the Community Investment Bonds Bike Improvements Program that we had put out earlier on in the year 2013 in the summer in a survey to the whole community of Cary. We had We had a good number, about 400, 500 people respond to that survey. Harrison Avenue was on that list and was identified as a possible project that we could have either bike lanes or sharrows put on that segment. In terms of our responses that we got back from the survey, we had over 70% of the survey respondents supported it, with 40% of that strongly supporting the project, and only about 8% opposed the project, with 5% of that strongly opposed. As we've been putting the contracts together to work on this project, we found out that NC DOT is planning to resurface this section later on this fall, along with four, or three other projects in town. Looks like for Harrison Avenue, that will be scheduled some point in September or early October, depending on the weather and the progress on their other projects. This doesn't quite coincide with what our project plans were for the community bike projects, so we tried to look at some solutions of how we could still look at the design options that we could have out there along the segment without being detrimental to either DOT or our project on either side. So we're basically looking at the possibility that the bike markings would probably go out across the community of Cary in summer of 2015, so there's a little bit of a gap between the two projects. So what we spoke with, spoke to some of the engineers in the town, and just came up with a solution that maybe could be beneficial for everybody, would be to look at the consideration of a complete street conversion for this segment of Harrison Avenue that would allow us to test out if a reduced cross-section for the vehicular traffic could be worked for this area. Basically, what we would do is, on the four-lane section, basically from the commercial developments up on the north end down to West Chapel Hill Road, we would convert it to a three-lane section from four lanes and use that extra lane to put bike lanes on both sides. What it also allows us to do is make some corrections and some improvements at West Chapel Hill Road intersection, where we have some very narrow lanes, where five lanes have been squeezed into the space of four at the intersection. What the options would be, would be to, the options also include adding a crosswalk at Kingswood, where we just installed sidewalks last summer. With the four-lane section, we weren't willing to put a striped crosswalk out there, but with this one, we were looking at the options of actually doing that as well. What we would do is do, we would send these plans to DOT as soon as we got approval to do so, to consider this during their project, allow them to stripe the cross-section with paint instead of thermoplastic markings, or those raised markings you see out there, the reflective. And then use the time period between this fall and the next spring to see how it works. The traffic volumes out there are conducive to a three-lane section. And then, once we have a lot of evaluation of the six to eight-month test period, we decide, when we get ready to implement the plans for the bike projects later on next summer, we could decide, do we want to keep the striping that is there, or do we want to put back the four lanes with the sharrows instead? This would also include a 35 mile-per-hour speed limit out there, which right now is 45. Personally, when I drive out there, I have a hard time going 45, and it seems like it's more like a 35 mile-an-hour section anyway, so... Here's a couple of cross-sections to show...
Straight mix.
Yes, it's a Code for America tool that we used here. We show the conversion here from a four-lane road to what it would look like as a three-lane cross-section, 14-foot center-turn lane, and five-foot bike lanes on either side.
I know.
This is a very similar process to what we've done in other projects around town, both Kildare Farm Road. We did a road diet out there on Walnut Street, where we took it from four lanes to three lanes and added sharrows. It's very similar traffic conditions that we see out there, 14,000 cars a day on Kildare Farm, 15,000 for Harrison Avenue. We also did the same process for the Lake Pine Road Diet, when we worked on that section below Southwest Cary Parkway, when we added the bike lanes down there from a four-lane section. From talking to other staff members that worked on these projects, we haven't had very much negative reactions to these projects, other than a couple of places where there are actually medians put in, not center-turn lanes. But for both, for Kildare Farm, we've pretty much really gotten mostly positive comments across the board for that one. I spoke a little bit earlier that we'd also be able to do some improvements down at West Chapel Hill Road, where we do have five lanes of traffic right now, going in basically a four-lane section, basically have probably eight, nine to 10-foot lanes, where you typically have 12. If we did this project, we'd be able to transition between Gray Street and Chapel Hill Road to make those lanes a little bit wider, a little bit safer. We would, our consultants would look at, see how we can make some improvements on the lateral shift that goes across the intersection there by moving some of the stop bars around. We also would change the northbound through right lane that's on Harrison right now beside the gas station to a right-turn-only lane, since we don't want to have one lane on the other side to receive it, and do a little work with timing the signal at the same time. We've looked at the intersection for all three peak hours that it has out there for traffic, both morning, midday, and nighttime, and with a little bit of retiming, a little bit of phasing changes, pretty minimal, we can keep the level of service that's out there today with this change. In terms of the evaluation period, over the time where we could, we did this pilot project, there's a number of ways we'll be looking to see how it performs out there. The town has recently, because of the bike project, got a couple of bike counters that we will install out there when we do, when DOT would do the resurfacing, to see how many bikes actually use the system while, if it was put into place and converted. We would definitely keep an eye out on the Chapel Hill Road and Harrison Avenue intersection and make sure that's operating well and keep our eyes on that signal. We also have, during the Community Investment Bond Bike Project, scheduled workshop where we would share designs with the community, and at that point, we'd have a good opportunity to also hear from a lot of citizens on the area, how it's working, if it's easier for them to get out their driveways now, if they see more bikes, if it's easier across the street. So we'll definitely be taking public comments during that time. We could also, if we needed to, do some more direct surveys out there, if that was something y'all would want. In terms of benefits and impacts, really, we see mostly benefits for this conversion. We'd be adding crosswalks and bicycle facilities out on the corridor. We would be helping the citizens that spoke earlier have a shorter crossing over the street, and we will be making sure that there's adequate site distance so that that crossing will be a safe location. There really will be no cost to the town, because our consultants are already working on this project as it stands. It would eliminate the need that if we decided to go to a three-lane section after DOT repaved it, we wouldn't have to mill up the pavement markings they had put out there if they did a four-lane road and pretty much start milling a brand-new paved road. And we'll also improve the lane widths and safety at Chapel Hill Road intersection. There may be some increases in delay on the northbound approach at Harrison Avenue at Chapel Hill. Like I said, most of that has, could be mitigated with some signal timing improvements. We did look at the capacity in the future for the roadway, and right now, it looks like with current trends and stuff, we probably wouldn't need to even consider going back to four lanes until 2022, so we have a lot of lifespan in this one here. We hope to be getting some DOT counts for 2013 here for shortly, so we'd be, have a better idea if traffic's actually growing on Harrison Avenue right now. The sort of question mark right now is to determine if we put this in, whether it would actually help or hinder the residents along the area, on the side streets and the driveways, getting in and out of their driveways. There's definitely some ways that they'll have less lanes to cross and have that refuge in the middle, so if they turn out, they could do it one lane at a time. But sometimes during the peak hours, we may have less gaps out there for them to turn into. So that's one of the things we'd definitely be looking at during the evaluation period. So our recommendation from staff is to implement the Complete Street Conversion Pilot Project with the DOT repaving project. Take the time between when we're going to implement the bike project to look and see if it works, and look at the different results and see, determine which of the plans we want to do, whether we want to stay at the three lanes if we do the project, or go back to four lanes, and then implement that recommended plan when we get ready next summer to do the permanent markings. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Well, Mr. Delk, I appreciate all of that information. However, I still have a boatload of questions, and I fear that council does too, and we might be headed for a work session. So my first question would be, what kind of timeline are we on here?
Well, with the DOT repaving project, that's sort of why we're on a little bit of a tight timeline, trying to figure out what we want to do out here. They look to be doing a, doing the repaving sometime in late September or October, so hence why we're trying to figure out a way to make this all work for everybody.
Okay. And I'll try to be very brief. I want to clarify what I think I heard.
Okay.
So it's approved in September, striped in October, can go away in the spring?
Yes, sir.
Is what I heard. Okay. And so that's the length of the pilot. And so a decision is made by who in the spring to do what?
I believe, in talking with the manager's office, that we give a report back to y'all to look at and see what the results are and see what a decision would be.
Okay. And then the traffic counts, you were saying that, were those daily traffic counts compatible with Kildare, or were those peak hour traffic counts, or? And do your traffic counts include any queuing related to train stops?
To, oh, no, it doesn't include train stops. That section's pretty much beyond, where we just did a lot of traffic counts in 2013 out in the area, in conjunction with the Harrison Avenue grade separation study. That's the traffic counts we use, so we have fairly recent traffic counts from 2013, so very recent counts that we were able to use at the intersection of Chapel Hill. We also did video of how much queuing and backing up there is, and there wasn't a problem with the Chapel Hill side in our observations we had with the trains.
This, okay, so, I didn't mean to take all the time up. I mean, I drive it several times a day, and in rush hour, especially coming southbound, it backs up at least a block, if not more. And I just can't imagine what one lane would do, and I don't know about the other way, because I never come that way late in the day. But those are the kinds of questions I have. And then one last question, then I got to open it up to my colleagues here for their questions. Is the, you said you presented the project to people and they approved, did that project that you presented include a lane reduction, or was it adding bike lanes what was presented?
We said that any of the projects on there would be the addition of bike lanes or sharrows for those projects.
Did not talk about lane reduction.
It did not talk about lane reduction.
That's a very important piece right there.
Okay.
Questions?
All right.
Appreciate that little tidbit right there. I think that makes a big difference. But my first question's regarding the crosswalk at Kingswood. Historically, the town has never put a crosswalk where there is not a stop sign, as it oftentimes provides a false sense of security for those trying to cross the road, and cars are not looking for a crosswalk without a stop sign or stoplight. I understand part of why you want to put one there, but I mean, what are the concerns about putting a crosswalk in the middle of a 35 mile-an-hour road with nothing to stop the cars?
We do have advanced warning signs out there, actually, already today, that we put up with the sidewalk project. We didn't stripe it alone, because it is 45 and a pretty wide road in terms of the laneage that's out there today. We would reduce the length that you'd have to cross with this one, and our consultants will be looking at the safe site distances in terms of crossing, like the citizen talked about earlier today, to see if there's a good room. The good thing about the median in there is that anybody that's in the median in that location is pretty much slowing down to go to Kingswood Drive in the first place, so they'll be pretty much stopping in that median, and they're in there as it is.
Explain a bike counter to me. How does that work? How does it actually count bikes and not people walking or cars driving?
So the bike counter would actually be a small loop that's in the pavement, in the bike lane out there, and it goes back to a little box that would be just out in the utility strip.
So it's one of those little rubber hosi thingies that?
No, it'd be in the pavement.
In the pavement?
Yes.
So how do you tell if a car drove over it, a garbage truck was picking up trash, or it was a bicycle?
It would be sensitive for what's in the bike lane. I don't have the full technical specs on those bike counters, but based on what we've been looking at, it's outside the travel lane of the car.
Right. But sometimes the cars don't stay in the travel lane.
Sure. And that'd be a pretty limited...
Yeah, neither does the mailman, neither does the garbage truck.
Sure.
FedEx. Okay. I also share some concerns as far as how the impact with the railroad here. I do appreciate the fact that it's a pilot program, that we would do this temporarily and see how it works, but in all fairness, it has worked very well on Kildare Farm Road. A lot of folks that I heard from that were opposed to the idea at first have actually contacted me after the fact and talked about how, you know, it actually worked out like everybody said it was, and they were glad, and slowed the cars down, and seemed to make things a little bit safer for folks. However, I was shocked to see that the traffic counts on Kildare and Harrison Avenue were the same. I mean, that was very, very surprising to me. I'm not ready to vote for this tonight, I will tell you that. I would really love to go back and ask the folks the question and let them know that we were, not only were we talking about adding bike lanes, but also talking about removing a travel lane, because I think that would really change those numbers. I mean, this Harrison Avenue is how everybody either gets to the businesses and stuff down at the other end, or gets to 40. It's, you know, it functions as a different road, in my opinion, than Kildare Farm Road. So those are my concerns. I'm a little hesitant to move this forward tonight without a little additional citizen feedback on the elimination of lanes.
Ms. Hecq?
And that's where I'll pick it up. I think we need some input from the citizens, particularly those who live along Harrison and those who turn onto Harrison, actually travel this road a lot too, Mayor, in the mornings, and frequently are turning onto Harrison from Johnson Street. And it's very tough with two lanes to go north. So I think what we're missing here is public opinion based on the full scope of the project.
Other comments?
Just one comment. I mean, obviously, I'm always excited about anything that adds bicycle lanes, because I do think that a lot of people do not feel safe on this part today when they ride their bike. There's, you know, too many cars going too fast, no, you know...
I don't feel safe in a car.
So I do think that's interesting. There's some dissenting opinions in the bicycle community about dedicated bike lanes versus sharrows. Have you heard any feedback about that? Because this is a dedicated bike lane, because I absolutely agree with Councilman France. You know, cars, one of the great things about having a sharo is when the cars drive over there and move the debris out of the way. You know, when you have a dedicated bike lane, a lot of debris ends up in the bike lane, and nobody wants to ride in the, well, not a lot of bicyclists want to ride in it. Was there any discussion about that?
There has been some discussion about that. For, that's typically where you don't have as much traffic traveling next to it. This bike lane is actually, would be about a foot wider than what we have typically for bike lanes, which is typically four foot, so there would be a little bit more space in the pavement that, so it wouldn't collect quite as close to the curb. So there's definitely a lot of folks out there that would rather have a dedicated bike lane, because they feel a little safer to be out of the travel lane than a sharo where it's in there and they have to share the road with cars.
So would there be a plan, because, for additional street cleaning or something like that, in order to keep it, you know, keep it free of debris? Because one of the things I think we all liked when you brought up the last chart was, you know, there was no cost. I was like, oh, that's good, but I wonder if there's, you know, some hidden costs that maybe we're not thinking of that, because of that.
That can definitely be part of the evaluation, to see if it actually does collect very much debris.
I'd love to see a metric associated with that.
Okay. Questions?
No, I mean, I'm ready to vote tonight. I don't need any more information.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion, Ms. Hecq.
So can we call for a public hearing on this?
Sure.
That would be my preference. I would like to hear from the people who both travel and live along there, as to, because there are some great pros here and we see some definite cons. It would help us know what to do if we could actually get citizen input, other than a survey, because with most of our surveys, I'm assuming it was a self-selected survey. You could opt-in or opt-out. And still, public, I mean, a public hearings like that too, you can come or not come. But that would be my preference, to call for a public hearing. I'm not sure a work session's going to help me. I understand what you want to do, and it's got some, I mean, the design's great, but I want to hear what people who are going to use it think.
One note on the queuing for the trains, we're not changing any of the lane dynamics coming southbound on Harrison Avenue. When you get to the intersection... When you get to the intersection, there'll still be two through lanes with the left one being able to, with the right one being able to turn right as well. There'll be a transition period between Gray Street and there. So in terms of cars queuing up back from the train, there's really no difference.
Right, but I'm concerned about the cars that are trying to go north, that they now know there's only going to be one lane they can go into when they get to Chapel Hill Road, so everybody's trying to maneuver and get into that one lane before they get there, which is going to make a much longer line of cars back to the railroad tracks.
That didn't, that problem didn't show up in our traffic analysis of being issued right now, so.
I'd be happy to make a motion, Mayor.
Okay.
I move we call for a public hearing on the complete street conversion pilot project from North Harrison Avenue.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. As part of clarification, do you have a date for that?
Well, I'd say the sooner the better. I know we have to notice it and all that, so it would probably be our second meeting in August, I'm thinking, which is the 28th. I don't know that for sure.
And how does that do on timeline? Is that too late?
We'll talk to DOT and try to figure it out.
Well, I mean, we voted up or down, but I mean, the, I think our intent is we don't want to make this decision in isolation. We need more information.
I don't know why we couldn't do it at our first August meeting, though.
As long as we can meet the law.
The law is what, 40 hours?
I think, no, I think if we.
I think it's longer than that.
In talking to public information today, we could possibly get one out in tomorrow's thing for the 14th.
Well, that'd be preferable, obviously.
If I believe that's correct.
The intent of my motion would be as soon as possible.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Please.
No, I, the only, the only thought I had was, you know, you were talking about the focus of the local folks, but I really think this is a, at least with a public hearing, what you'll get is you'll get from those that use this artery.
I hope we'll get it from everyone, but it's a good point, Mr. Smith.
But at the same time, you know, I just, you know, intuitively, taking a congested road and condensing it, you know, we have a lot of, a lot of projects that we need to work on and is this where we want to focus our energy? That, that's my thought.
Okay.
Assuming this is going to pass, one thing I'm going to need for the next meeting is more information on a bike counter and how that differentiates between trash trucks, FedEx trucks, post office vehicles that swerve over into the lane versus a bike. Because I can tell you, I drive it very often, there are no bikes on that road.
Going on that road.
Yeah, exactly. You're a cyclist, so.
Not today, but maybe after a complete.
Well, understood, but how do we ensure that we are truly counting bikes?
Other comments, questions? Okay, we have a motion to set a public hearing as soon as possible. Hopefully, that'll be August 14th. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries six to one.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. This takes us to item 6.2, consideration of Bradford development agreement. Mr. Jensen will present the item and council may take action. Mr. Jensen.
Good evening, Council. The developer of the Bradford mixed-use development project desires to make a payment of funds to the town in lieu of constructing required off-site road improvements at the intersection of Cary Parkway and High House Road. The required improvements are also incorporated into the town's Cary Parkway-High House Road Transportation Improvement Project, ST 1231, and could be constructed as part of the town's project rather than as a separate project. A single construction project by the town would benefit, benefit the traveling public and neighboring property owners by minimizing construction impacts. Staff recommends council authorize the town manager to enter into the agreement to coordinate and integrate development of public transportation infrastructure improvements. Secondly, to grant staff the authority to make minor adjustments to the draft agreement. And thirdly, recognize the $200,000 contribution from the Bradford developers to the ST 1231 Cary Parkway-High House Road Intersection Project. And we'd certainly be glad to answer any questions for you tonight.
Okay. Council members, questions, comments, motion?
I guess.
Mr. Yar.
Find it.
So we would be, again, trying to be very basic, you went through that very fast, and I was hoping there'd be a lot more slides here to look at. There weren't, so let me try and repeat some of those. By accepting the payment in lieu, we would be allowing the Bradford folks to continue building the next phase, I forget how many square feet you had in the, in the staff report, but we would be allowing them to do that without an actual road improvement until it's time for us to, to make that improvement.
That, that is correct. The, there is a site plan obligation at, at a particular CO for lots nine or 11, if they develop on those lots, that this required off-site improvement had to be put in place. They have a, a food store right now ready to open up, and that was a requirement, so that's what's the pressing need for, for this agreement.
And how long will this be until that road improvement would be made?
The, the town of Cary is currently, we have, we have funds for this project. We're getting federal funds for it as well. We are in current design right now, and that design will be finished by the end of, of 2014 this year, and then we'll be starting right away and construction soon thereafter, with hopeful completion for the, for the end of 2015. So we're about a year, year and four months away from, from total completion.
And the food store that's really moving along pretty fast, that's part of this new phase, so.
Yeah, correct.
So in other words, maybe we'll say a year from by the time that's ready till the time this road gets done, we'll, we'll be having additional traffic without the road improvement?
That's correct. My understanding from the developers that they, we're trying to receive a CO on that particular food store in the middle of September. So it's about a year.
Ready?
This September.
Other comments?
Thank you.
I make a motion?
Cut.
Is it all right if I make a motion? Okay, I make a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into the agreement to coordinate and integ, and integrate development of public transportation infrastructure improvements and that we grant staff the authority to make minor adjustments to the draft agreement and that we recognize the $200,000 contribution from Bradford to SPE LLC to the ST 1231 Cary Parkway-High House Road Intersection Project as discussed in the fiscal impact section of this report.
Second. There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye, no.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Now moved item 6.3 is the Pritchett tract rezoning requests. We first need to get a motion to remove this item from the table.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Granton will give a report. We previously heard from the Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation for approval, and the protest petition originally filed is still valid. This means that it will require six council members to approve this request, and council may take action on this item this evening. Ms. Granton?
Thank you. I'll just briefly review the facts of the case and the changes since you last saw this. The subject property is approximately 52.25 acres. Here's an aerial view of the property. It is located in the southeast area plan, which has a designation of low to medium density residential and very low density to low density residential. The property is bisected by a stream buffer. The existing zoning is residential 40. The proposed zoning is residential eight conditional use on the portion of the property fronting Holly Springs Road and residential 12 conditional use for the property that backs up to homes along Campbell Road. The conditions that are proposed by the applicant are that there be a maximum number of dwelling units for the entire property of 93. This is underlined because this is a change since the last time you saw this. Originally, it was over 100 and then it went to 95, so the current proposal is for 93 overall to address all the traffic mitigations that were identified in the traffic analysis report. That the use be limited to detached residential, community garden, and/or private neighborhood recreation. There was another change that would reduce the density in this tract, Area 1, to 2.1 dwelling units per acre. Previously, it was 2.5 dwelling units per acre, so that has been reduced. A 30-foot Type A opaque buffer is proposed adjacent to the Campbell Woods neighborhood along the southern property line. The applicant has proposed a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet adjacent to Campbell Woods, an overall average lot size of 10,000 square feet, and a condition added since the last time you saw this, that there be a minimum average lot size of 12,000 square feet for lots that are within 600 feet of the southern property line. There is also a condition that there would be a 10,000 square foot open area preserved around the existing cemetery. This shows you the location of the existing cemetery on the property. That there be a minimum of 15,000 square feet of open space for community gathering around the existing barn. Previously, this was 10,000 square feet, and since you saw this last, that area was increased by 5,000 square feet. And within that 15,000 square foot area, the applicant has proposed to designate a minimum of 3,000 square feet for playground or totlot. So this was also a new condition since you saw this last. This shows you the existing barn on the property. There is a silo which was added to be part of the preservation easement where the open space area would be provided. And this shows you the location of the barn and silo and open space area. Also for Area 1, there had been an existing condition, which you'd seen before, that there be a minimum side yard setback of 10 feet. R8 allows aggregate of 20, but had a minimum of five. The applicant's proposed a 10-foot side yard setback. And they, they've also offered a new condition that there be a minimum rear yard setback of 25 feet, which is five feet above what the ordinance would require. There have not been any changes since the last time you saw this plan for Area 2, where the R12 conditional use is proposed. That remains, as you saw before, use is limited to detached residential, community garden, and/or private neighborhood recreation. A maximum density of 1.5 dwelling units is proposed. Minimum average lot size of 15,000 square feet. A 20,000 square foot minimum lot size for lots within 50 feet of the southern and eastern property line. As you stated, there is still a protest map. I've had several calls from neighbors saying that they both supported and opposed, but we've not received any withdrawn protests. As you know, the Planning and Zoning Board recommended this for approval by a vote of six to two. And this concludes staff's presentation. Available for your questions.
Okay. Council members, questions, comments?
I guess I have a couple of questions. Going back to your slide that refers to the minimum, average minimum within 600 feet, I believe it's of the Campbell Road properties. So if the lots adjacent to, let's see, to the southern property line, okay, so that's, so southern is over at Fordland Drive side. So if the, there's adjacent lots are 20,000 square feet, but then the lots within 100, 600 feet have an average, minimum average lot size of 12,000. Does that mean that we should expect some of the other lots within that 600 feet to be much smaller than 12,000 square feet? Because it's averaging with lots that are 20,000 square feet?
I'm going to ask the applicant to, to come forward. I didn't, when you, there's, let's just back up a little bit, the, the R8 zoning district, I was trying to get back to this slide. If you could just give me that question.
Okay, this is for Area 1.
Okay.
So if you could put your mouse over Area 1 for us. Okay, so in Area 1, the condition says, the third condition says lots located within 50 feet of the southern property line shall have a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet.
Correct.
So I understand that and I get that. The next condition says lots located within 600 feet of the southern property line shall have a minimum average lot size of 12,000 square feet.
Correct.
So that suggests to me that if you have, let's say, six or eight, I don't know how many lots you'd get along that southern line there in Area 1, but let's, let's say you could get 10 on that side, and then you'd get 10 on the other side. It suggests to me that the 10 on the other side would be much smaller than 12,000 square feet because you're averaging it with the lots that are 20,000 square feet. Is that?
I, I am probably not the best person. I don't have a site plan in front of me.
If you can answer that.
Yeah.
My concern here is I would not have put the word average in here. I would have put, shall have a minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet. That would give us the assurance that there would.
Oh, I see, I, I see what you're saying, so.
There'd be a step-down transition in lot sizes. It's a little incongruent when you put 20,000 square foot lots on one side of the street and then you have 9,000 square foot lots on the other side or whatever it might be.
Right, and just as a quick clarification, and I'll use the pointer, and this is a plan-related response, so it's not borne out on the conditions, but just for you all's edification with respect to our work on the plan.
Yeah, that's not cooperating.
The, the anticipation, as you can see, southeast Cary Parkway terminates here, and the idea, in order to lay the site out, given the fact you have to cross a stream and you want to make a perpendicular crossing, and this really isn't working, the road is going to come down here and follow the southern boundary. For, for all intents and purposes, the most that we can get on this southern boundary in Track 1 are four 20,000 square foot lots, and our current plan is for three. We're trying to see if we can get a fourth one there because we really like the big lots adjacent to it, but as of right now, it, it's a far cry from 10. But to answer your question, there will be smaller lots north of that, just as a creature of the simple math associated with if you have 20,000 square feet as the boundary and an average of 12 within 600 feet, there will be lots, obviously, that are less than 20,000 square feet as you work your way north towards the northernmost portion of the property.
I presume that they'd be less than 20,000 square feet? Would they be less than 12,000 square feet? Because I'm, I'm looking at that word there that you put in there as far as average, minimum average lot size.
Yeah, and I would anticipate that there would be some lots that are less than 12,000 square feet, yes, and that's why we didn't put minimum.
Okay, all right, and I think there's one other place in the report, I think, for Area 2 that had the same language as far as average, minimum average.
That was an overall for Area 2, that the minimum average lot size be 15,000 square feet for all of Area 2. So that was just taking into consideration that lots within 50 feet of the southern boundary line be 20,000 square foot minimum, and that the minimum average lot size for the entire R12 be 15,000.
Okay, and so.
So it takes the 20,000 into consideration.
So you will have some lots that are at least 20,000 square feet, and then you'll have several lots that are well below 15,000 square feet because you're trying to achieve an average and you're including the 20,000.
Possibly, that's the minimum average, correct. It could be higher than that, but you won't, you won't have anything less than 12,000. That's guaranteed by the zoning condition. But averaging all the lots together, the average could not fall below 15,000.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not really ready to do quick math on the fly here, but it looks to me like basically you would get the 20,000 square foot lots that are immediately adjacent to the boundary, and everything else would probably be closer to that 12,000 rather than closer to a 15, just by the nature of the, the length of that, that border. We've done this before. We've had other subdivisions before where we say along our border of another neighborhood, we're going to go ahead and put in these bigger lots, and then on the other side of the street, we're going to allow smaller lots. I think it looks disjointed. I don't think it's our best practice, and so I'm not a big fan of that. I'll hold off if anybody else has questions, ask some other comments about this, but I'll hold off.
Other comments, questions?
Make a motion.
Well, I, was it done?
I mean, I'm trying to, I'm trying to absorb all that you were just saying. I mean, the, one, you're not, it's not across the street, so it won't look disjointed. It'll blend in a, a smooth transition from the larger ones adjacent inward.
Across the street inside the neighborhood.
Across what street inside?
The street that will go in there.
Well.
Could you show us a map that shows us a little bit more detail between 1 and 2?
All right. And then the smaller lots in Phase 1 are going to be up by the old barn.
Correct, but you, what I'm saying is that when you, when you read through these conditions quickly, it, the perception is that it's, you're going to have 15,000 square foot lots, but you're not going to have a minimum of 15,000 square foot lots. You're going to have a minimum of 12,000 square foot lots because they're averaged with the 20,000 square foot lots that have been conditioned. 20,000 square foot lots that have been conditioned. And what I'm saying is when we have done this in the past, largely in my district, you put 12,000 square foot lots across from the 20,000, it doesn't look as good. I would much rather say that you're driving into this one section and it's larger lots versus having a section that has large on one side and small on the other. That's just my opinion. I took the opportunity to visit several MI home communities, so drive around town and drive around other towns, and some of the MI homes that are built are really beautiful, like what they have over in Raleigh at the Umstead. Those lots there are 17,800 square feet on average. But there's other neighborhoods that I've seen where we have very small lots. The product is, it's not the same product as what's put on the 17,800 square foot lots. I think there's a loss of articulation. This is what I voiced at the last meeting, my concern with the fact that you have kind of a boxy look, and when you put a lot of buildings with a boxy look close together in a tight density, it doesn't look as good. I had really hoped that the density would be able to either, I was really hoping that the applicant would either raise the density to a minimum of 12,000 square foot lots for the entire project because, one, I knew that most of the residents could get behind this project if it had that minimum density, and that's, that in their minds, as the people who live adjacent to this, they perceive that as what would be compatible with their community. But two, if it wasn't going, if we weren't going to have the larger lots, then I was hoping that we would get some kind of conditions offered that would address the articulation or lack thereof in the buildings. I mean, I would have liked to have had some conditions offered that would guarantee us that even though we're going down into these very tight densities, that we're not going to have this kind of cookie cutter, boxy, 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 boxy look, especially from Holly Springs Road, which we'll in all likelihood be looking into the backsides of several houses. So for those reasons.
If I could, if I could interject, the applicant tried to offer conditions about architecture, building design, building materials. We couldn't accept those conditions. We do not review building elevations for single-family detached products, so that's nothing that we could enforce. The applicant can speak to private agreements that they have been working with the neighbors on, but they did, they did offer those, and we explained that we could not accept those.
That's interesting. I think that we need to have some kind of pow-wow between our legal staff, our planning staff, and our council at some point because just recently, we talked about House Bill 150 that was going to say that, that towns could not regulate the aesthetics on houses. But we also discussed the fact that if applicants offered conditions, that they could be accepted and that those could be held, they could be held to their own conditions. So we need to kind of get our minds around what this looks like going forward in the future because it's something that, that our residents are concerned about, and we ought to fully understand going forward.
Other comments, questions?
I guess I can make a comment. I really appreciate your remarks, Mrs. Robinson. I came in here tonight, pretty much going to be voting for this, but that point you bring up, I, I really didn't catch that my first reading. With these two conditions, the, the lots located within 50 feet of the southern property line shall have a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. That's nice. The next sentence is lots located within 600 feet of the property line should be an average, minimum average of 12,000. I was thinking that meant between 51 feet and 600. In other words, if the 50 feet were 20,000, then the next calculation started after that 50 feet and went on to the 600. That's really the way I understood that, thinking we would have a, a transition then of 12,000 square foot lots, and then I knew we were going to get smaller as we got farther away. And I really not that concerned about the 8,000 square foot lots farther away up in the other corner. I mean, I know the residents were concerned about that. That didn't hit me as a, as a terrible issue, and I really had to get my hands around the historic preservation element of this, and I did. But now I'm concerned. If, if that means that you're taking those 20,000 square foot lots into consideration when you have an average of 12,000, that, that math concerns me.
And just so that I understand, is that for the all of Track 1, or is it for just the southern part of Track 1? Because, and where is that southern boundary, where's that line drawn on the picture?
Where was 600 feet? Where's 600 feet?
Right, but where is it on the picture?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good question.
That, we don't have that level of detail on that, on the plan.
Because I wonder, is, are we just talking about 10 homes impacted? Are we talking about?
Well, that's my question. Is it appropriate to ask the applicant a question? I'd like to know how many lots are we looking, or see, of the 93 lots, or even if you just want to talk about Area 1 at this point, how many lots are going to be 20,000? I heard three to four. How many are going to be 12? How many are going to be 15? How many are going to be 10? I think that would help us because I, I hear on paper and with doing the math, yes, to average it out, some will be smaller, but they may, but they're not going, I would assume they're not going to be 8,000 square feet there across the street from the 20, so if it's appropriate, well, that's why I want to ask.
So would the Baron connect?
And just give us an idea, and I do think it would actually help me. You think about 93 units down from the original 120-something, I think. Because I always think in terms of, well, what percentage are 20,000, 15,000, 12,000, 10,000, 8,000, so.
And this is obviously, again, a plan-related detail that is subject to engineering and all those things. The last plans that our folks have worked up, and again, it's not engineering detail, the number was around 29 or 30 of the total lots associated with this development would start with an 8.
So less than a third.
Correct. And we, we've had conversations with the, with the adjacent owners, and I do want to point out, I don't know if there's a way to go to the, a slide that includes, what's unique about this site, and you've heard this from MI on, on multiple cases, they love natural features. They love being able to utilize natural features in order to incorporate them, either as like walkout basements, or in, in this case, they essentially serve as de facto backyards. And when we had this conversation with our, the, the neighbors when we met with them, we described that, given the kind of linear layout of this side of the property, there's, there's going to be a, a row of homes that's going to follow this natural feature. And, and a lot of the homes up in this section of the property, while those lots will begin with an 8 and in the front of the number, because this is a 100-foot buffer on either side of the creek, there's going to be another 100 feet behind their property that you can't lot into, but for all intents and purposes, is going to serve as those folks' backyard. And I just moved out of a house that was similar to that circumstance. So again, to answer the question, it's currently less than 30 for all of the lots, and that's taking into consideration that there's a good number of lots that have, in practice, a much larger backyard than the lot would give you the feel for. And Jennifer, to, to your question about the 600-foot line.
The zoning map up?
It is in this ballpark here. It is just south of the cemetery. Kind of in, starting here and working, it's right, and again, it's 600 feet measured kind of parallel to this line, so it's not like you go perpendicular to Holly Springs. It's parallel to the southern boundary, so it would go across here.
Other questions?
Oh, no, but I mean, I think, you know, as Ed brought up the concern, but I think, you know, I think the applicant just answered it in the sense that, you know, the concern about the disjointed look, the, the natural topography and the natural feature of the land actually plays to the advantage of the appearance. It, it actually softens that concern about a disjointed look because you've got, you know, basically, you've got a larger, you've got the 100-foot buffer on the one side, and then you've got the, the buffer from the, the stream going through there. I mean, you know, we can sit here and, and, and superanalyze this, or you can go back to, it was 125 units down, and it kept going down and down and down, it's down to 93 units. We've protected the neighbors. We've addressed the things. There are private agreements which we can't get involved with, which meet the spirit and intent of our concerns. So I mean, I guess the question is just how much, how much is that a concern, you know, for this one? I mean, you, you are right, you have experienced a lot up in your district, and, and you bring that wisdom, you know, and that concern here, but we have to look at each case unique to the topography and unique to the situation. And seems to be that there was, with all the neighborhood meetings, especially in the more recent ones, where we've gotten off-center, you know, some great strides have been made. You know, that's just my observation on it.
The other thing I'd like to point out is the developers or the applicant's commitment to not connect to Fordland Drive. I mean, we all heard that was huge, and while they can't, we're not there yet. I mean, I, I think it's very clear the applicant does not want to connect, nor does this council want them to connect, nor do the residents. I mean, we always heard about what the gentleman said earlier, connectivity, transition, compatibility. Compatibility, I mean, single-family homes going in with single-family homes. The transition, I think they've gone above and beyond to try to address that issue by putting the large lots at the south end of the property. You've got LDR, MDR across Holly Springs Road. The farther west they go to get to the LDR, they go VLDR to LDR. And I, I think they've really addressed the, the transition all the way around the site. I do appreciate your concerns, Ms. Robinson, regarding minimum lot, the lot sizes, but I think we just heard that, you know, a third, we'll start with an 8, so it could be 8,000 to 89, 99, but with the stream and such as their backyard, it's going to have a much larger feel. I'm sure if they could legally plat the lot and the stream, they would, and it would increase the number, but at the end of the day, I don't really know that it makes a I'm very pleased with their efforts to, you know, I mean, cemetery's a no-brainer, but the barn and the silo, 15,000 square foot, feet of community gathering space with 3,000 of that being a tot lot, I think that really provides a wonderful amenity on-site for folks. It's something that this council has really wanted to push in the last few years. 30-foot buffers adjacent to Campbell Woods, they have reduced density, they've increased side and rear yard setbacks. I think we're getting as good a product or a project as we can get, and I'm actually a little fearful if this doesn't work out and this applicant walks away, what might we get two, three, four years from now? You know, when this council, these, all of us might not be sitting here, and you get a different applicant that might not be as willing to, you know, make so many conditions and, and offer so much to, to the surrounding community. So I, I applaud the applicant's efforts and the residents' efforts to, to try to work together towards something that they can all be, you know, satisfied with. I know at the end of the day, some aren't, some are, but you know, compromise is always a two-way street, and I think both sides have worked really hard towards that. We're, we're here, we've heard from folks who were once vehemently opposed to it, who now cautiously support it, and then there are still those that still oppose it. So for all those reasons, I'm, I'm going to, or I would support this tonight. I think it's about as good a project as we're going to get.
Ms. Adcock?
So I was waiting, pardon me, for someone to make a motion to, to make these points, but I'll make them now. And Mr. Gates made a good point when he said this plan is not perfect, and, and this plan is in everything else in life. Perfection is rare, but I think there've been so many changes from the original plan to tonight that brings it closer to the ideal, and there's, there's six that strike me, and some of this will be quite reminiscent of what Mr. France said, but the, the decrease from 120-some lot units to 93, the, the increase in lot sizes, particularly the larger lots along the east and southern borders, the transition from south to north with the most dense being up there near the commercial development there at Holly Springs, the historical preservation, particularly the barn, the grain silo, and the cemetery, which, by the way, were offered on the front end, and not something that had to be negotiated, and has support of Gary Roth with the Historical Preservation Society, the open space and recreation, which, by the way, has been increased, the no undesired and unnecessary connectivity with Fordland Drive, and the sixth one, meeting all traffic mitigations. I mean, I think there's a really big case to be made for this being a good plan for this area. I intend to support it when somebody makes a motion.
Make a motion to approve 13 REZ-27.
There's a motion and a second discussion.
Yeah, I'll just say, you know, I look at what's happening in our development community a lot, and my reservation about what's happening right now in the recovery from this recession is that land prices have gone higher and higher and higher, and development companies are forced to put in tighter and tighter densities and to take measures to bring down the costs of development because they're paying so much for the land. And I really think that that is at the core of what is going wrong right now in the development of Cary, is that land prices have gone up so high that we are not seeing this, maybe the products that we were, we would like to see in Cary. I, I speak from someone who is seeing it every day in my district and, and the western side of town. There are so few opportunities for us to see land developed in Cary. There's, there's not that much land left to be entitled, and we had an opportunity here, not to get it kind of right, but to get it really right and to really have it be a great project. I hope that I'm proven wrong with this development of this project. I hope that it is better than what I fear it's going to be, and that would be wonderful, but in good conscience, I cannot vote for this because I honestly believe we could have done better. The applicant, the landowner, and the council could have gotten an even better product than, than what we have here. So I don't, I don't think the 8,000 square foot lots is the, is the best approach, and certainly not a third of the project being 8,000 square foot lots.
Other comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Remember, it takes six affirmative votes for this to pass. Mr. Yerba?
I could just clarify. I appreciate Mr. Baron's response to my concern between the 51 and 600 feet, and trying to do some math here and everything. I'm realizing now that that 600 feet goes all the way up to the cemetery. I mean, I, I feel better about that. I was thinking there would be fewer lots there in those three or four, and I realize, and Mr. Baron gave the disclaimer himself, that when he says three or four, it's, we don't know any of that because that hasn't been decided. I, I understand all that. But if there are only three or four bigger lots, and there's going to be quite a few going up there to the cemetery, it's, it's not going to offset, we're not going to get a whole bunch of, you know, 6,000 square foot lots across from the 20,000. That's an exaggeration, but it, it is going to be somewhat of a transition. So I, I feel more comfortable with that concern that I all of a sudden had after your comments. And otherwise, I, like I said, I was prepared to come in here voting for it tonight, and I, I'm, I'm going to stick with that. I, I think the, Ms. Adcock mentioned Mr. Roth's stamp of approval on this, and that's very unusual, that Historic Preservation, Capital Area Preservation will approve a development plan like this. I feel terrible that that main house is going to be lost. I'd still love it to be moved and saved, and I suppose there's still time for that to happen, but it's great the rest of it is going to be preserved, the barn, the silo, the cemetery. And, and I have to mention, this is just, can't say just the rezoning because it's been so painful, it's been more than just anything, but it is just the rezoning, and, and Mrs. Campbell's comments were, were great, how she's enjoyed working together and getting to know everybody better. I think there's still going to be a lot of that going on. You know, I saw a list the other day from, I believe Mr. Gates had sent me of some of those concerns that are really more site plan-related and things that we can't enforce as a zoning condition, as, as you mentioned. But I think there really is still some conversation that can go on between the developer and, and the, the neighbors on those things. And I think the fact that all sides have been as, as amicable here, working together, and have gotten to this point, that I think they can even get to a further point as, as we go along with the site plan. So, so hoping, maybe naively optimistic, I'm going to support the, the motion.
Any other comments?
Can I make one more comment? You know, as this land goes, so goes these other parcels that are going to come to us for rezoning. And I'm very pleased that this applicant came in, even though it was LDR to MDR, and that first part there is 2.1. You know, a lot of people would have come in with something that was much more. lot of people would have come in with something that was much more dense than that. And of course, the parcel more to the east is, is 1.5. But I think that sets a great precedent, that coming in with something that really is low density, more than, than heading towards the medium-density side. And I think that sets a good precedent for what's going to happen along this road.
Okay.
And one last comment I would make is, I would like to thank all the residents and the citizens that have spent an enormous amount of time. I mean, this is their, their largest investment of your life is generally your, your home and where you live. And Mrs. Campbell, Mr. Gates, Mr. Weber, they've, they've reached out to all of us personally. And the MI Homes folks have done, done that as well, as, as well as Mr. Barron. And I think it's one of the great things about Cary is that they're still talking, no matter how this goes. And in fact, Ms. Campbell, I love the fact that no matter how this goes, there are no winners or losers. The fact is, you've got a chance to meet all your neighbors. You'll continue the conversation. I hope MI will continue to have an open mind and take some of these great ideas that your neighbors will have, because I think the harmony that's created in this environment will suit you as well, right? Because it's a, it's a wonderful community of really impassioned citizens. And I'm, I'm really glad to see that, because we often, we make this decision and we move on, but these folks don't move on. They live with it every day.
We have a motion and a second with a valid protest petition. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries six to one.
Make a motion to approve the comprehensive plan consistency for rezoning, 13 REZ-27.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries six to one. It's now time for closed session. I would entertain a motion to go into closed.
I'll be happy to do that, Mayor. Pursuant to General Statute 143-318, 11A1, 5 and 3, I move that we hold a closed session to one. Instruct the town staff concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the town in negotiating the price and material terms of contracts or proposed contracts for acquisition of properties owned by Pensco Trust Company located at 202 Gordon Street, Cary, North Carolina, 275 11-306, and 128 Southwest Maynard Road, Cary, North Carolina, 27511-4402. And two, consult with attorneys employed by and/or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys in the town. And three, to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by General Statute 143-318, 10E.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're in closed session.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
A second. Motion and a second discussion. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
If you need to oppose, we are adjourned. Thank you.
This has been a production of KIRI TV. Visit the Town of KIRI website at townofkirii.org.